Three student matters, eight religious exemptions, one volunteer, six new hires, one resignation, and one change in status.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? All right, we also need to certify that we only discussed those things just mentioned.
I certify.
I certify.
Certify.
I certify.
I certify. And now we need to take action from closed session.
Madam Chair, I believe that we uphold the disciplinary committee's recommendations for alternative school placement concerning students 202511101, student 202511102, and student 202511103.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington. A second by Dr. Erie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? All right, excellent. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda, please. Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. A second by Ms. Whittington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? Wonderful. Now if you'll join me at a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. All right, thank you. And if you'll join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love hearing those little voices saying it. It just warms my heart. All right, excellent. Thank you so much. First up on our agenda, we have recognition, ACMS student recognition, from Mr. Cooper, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, once a month, our students and staff vote on one sixth grade, one seventh grade, and one eighth grade student to be selected as our Students of the Month by positively demonstrating our pride, expectations of being present, respectful, involved, determined, and excellent. This past month, we got to recognize our three students, and I invited them today. Essence was able to join us tonight. So Essence Bland. Essence, do you want to come up here so we can get your recognition? Essence, who was our sixth grade choice. Students and staff said that Essence is always there to help others in need, and she is always present, respectful, involved, determined, and excellent. She is also positively involved in her class, kind, and respects everyone. So we just want to give a shout out to Essence, who joined us tonight. Our seventh grade individual was Sheridan Chapman. Students and staff said Sheridan is a very kind and caring individual, as he always is there for others, and he likes to have fun and stay safe at the same time. He really sparks power by being present and excellent in class. And lastly, our eighth grade nominee was Roscoe Wood. Students and staff said of Roscoe, he is a good friend. He shows excellent behavior in class and around others. He's very determined. So please join us recognizing Essence Bland, Sheridan Chapman, and Roscoe Wood for positively impacting our school.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our public comment. Anyone is here for a public comment? I say that as an invitation. So if no one comes to the podium, then I don't have to read all of the stuff that goes with public comment. So if there is no one coming up for public comment, wonderful, we'll go ahead and scooch on through. I know, right? I'll scooch on through. All right, we now have our, oh, our report from Abraham. Thank you for coming out this evening. It's so lovely to meet you and see you. We have your student report, please.
During the past month, ACMS launched a campaign against vaping by making announcements at school and in the Sunday message, hanging posters, closing restaurants during class transitions, increasing consequences for vaping, and participating in Red Ribbon Week, which is a week-long campaign of saying no to drugs. During Red Ribbon Week, we had dress-up days, gave out rubber bracelets with the slogan "Life is a Puzzle: COVID Drug Free" and stickers that encourage students to say no to drugs. ACMS is excited to report that the volleyball team led an undefeated season, progressed to the quarterfinals of the Region 2A Volleyball Tournament, where they defeated Nattaway in a 3-0 victory. They will play at home in the semifinals on Monday, November 10 at 6:00 p.m. versus Southampton. If they win the semifinals, they will play in the regional finals on Wednesday, November 12 at 6:00 p.m. and receive an automatic berth to the state tournament. Congratulations, Lady Raiders. Coach Rather was awarded Coach of the Year for the James River District. Coach Rather passed the award on to his assistant coach, Taylor Redman. She has won district four years in a row.
That's awesome.
Fifteen Amelia FFA members and their advisors attended the 98th National FFA Convention Expo this month. Students are broadening their horizons by visiting the College and Career Expo, attending workshops, and participating in team activities. Students engaged in sessions featuring nationally recognized speakers as well as visited the rodeo in Indianapolis. Our entire student body cheered on the Metford League athletes during the first home game. It was heartwarming to see the excitement our students showed for the success of the fellow Raiders. All ninth grade students spent freshman day of service volunteering at various locations throughout our community. This event is a wonderful opportunity for our students to give back, build connections, and experience the value of service in action. The ACMS Scholastic Bowl team beat Leneberg 2-0. They continue to improve as their point totals have improved through the season. The Amelia County varsity football team is coming off a rebuilding season marked by tremendous growth and success. Throughout the year, this group of student athletes overcame significant adversity and demonstrated unwavering determination both on and off the field. Their hard work paid off as the team improved their record and increased participation in the program. Outbosting a strong roster of 50 players, the coaching staff and players are proud of the progress they've made and are already looking forward to building on their momentum as they prepare for 2026. Amelia County Middle School has experienced a vibrant and productive past month, marked by outstanding student achievement, deep community engagement, and strong cultural celebrations. We are currently celebrating Native American Heritage Month, focusing our efforts on integrating diverse perspectives and history into our curriculum and daily discussions. This focus on cultural awareness strengthens our learning community. The positive culture at ACMS was a full display during our most recent Pride Assembly held last Friday, where we proudly recognize students who consistently model positive behaviors and embody our school values. Celebrating these achievements reinforces a supportive and accountable learning environment for everyone. We successfully launched our first club day this year, providing students with an exciting opportunity to select a club of genuine personal interest. The initiative designed to foster deeper connections and explore diverse passions saw high participation and engagement across all grade levels. Our engagement with the Amelia County community reached a high point with our successful trunk or treat event. This gathering saw tremendous community participation, bringing families, staff, and students together for a safe and fun evening on campus. ACMS is proud to celebrate significant successes in our competitive programs. Our dedicated volleyball team achieved an outstanding result, finishing the season as a district winner. The ACE team demonstrated academic excellence. Our ACE team secured first place in the district in both overall record and total points. As we transition into the winter season, energy is high. Trials and early practices for winter sports, including girls' volleyball and boys' basketball, as well as winter cheerleading, are successfully underway, promising another exciting slate of competition. ACMS is thriving thanks to the dedication of our students, the commitment of our staff, and the strong support of our community. We look forward to continuing this positive momentum throughout the remainder of the semester. Past month has been another fun-filled and busy one. ACES celebrated Unity Day on October 21 by wearing orange to show a visible message of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion to prevent bullying. Our roar team also hosted another McDonald's night, and we held our first-quarter roar event with a space team. ACES Annual Trunk or Treat was a huge success despite moving the event inside. We enjoy seeing all of our students, families, and staff with their creative costumes.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. We appreciate you capturing everything for all three schools and sharing it with us this evening. All right, next, we're going to move into instruction, beginning with our student-teacher ratios report by Dr. Browning.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a little bit of laryngitis.
I'm right there with you.
Student teacher ratio report for the sixth school year. We're required to share that our student-teacher ratio report with the school board annually, so this is part of our annual process. As you look over the ratios, you'll notice the ratios are within our SOQ requirements at each level. Your requirement is 1 to 23 for grades K through 3, 1 to 24 for grades 4 and 5, as well as 1 to 24 in English in grades 6 through 12. Actual class sizes can vary and do vary depending on the number of students in each grade level, resulting from over the SOQ maxima. The ratios you see tonight are calculated by determining the total number of students in all the classes, or content area in each school than dividing the total number of students by the total number of sections we have for that same specific content. So while you see the numbers you have tonight are averages, again, the actual class sizes can vary. They can also be higher or lower based on the enrollment of that kid. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this report.
All right, wonderful. Any questions for Dr. Browning on the ratio report? Okay, we also have you for the Division Professional Development Day.
So I am thrilled to update you on our PD Day. This year, our theme of Let Your Light Shine Bright was definitely highlighted by our ACMS teachers and team members who presented and took part. On Slide 2, you'll see our PD Day is just one more layer in a multi-passed and multi-layered approach to professional learning and growth in Amelia County Public Schools. On Slide 3, we're going to start transitioning into an overview of the day. On Slide 4, you'll see those are our priorities. They were developed through our comprehensive needs assessment done in the spring, and we tailored the day to focus on those priorities. As we go to Slide 5, you'll see that we had a number of ACMS teachers, team members, administrators, and partners presenting throughout the day. It was a full day that started with showcases in the morning, and then teams broke off to sessions led by their leadership teams in the afternoon. On our next slide, you'll see a little bit more, and these were some of the highlights. We began the day with breakfast with some light refreshments and time to just connect, and then we went to our showcase sessions. During those showcase sessions, we had a number of topics that were covered. We in fact had 20 different topics, and they were each offered for two different sessions, which was a ton of different sessions. Now, we're going to break off into a little more detail on what each school did when they went back to their schools. At the elementary school, the teams engaged in professional learning to support their school-wide goal of priorities. They did a collaborative data dive of their VALS and SLOL data using a See Think Wonder strategy. And then the sessions, after that session ended, grade-level and content-area teams broke out, extend their professional learning during a collaborative PLC session. At the middle school, pictures cover the title. At the middle school, our team began their breakout session by doing a physical learning PLC that was facilitated by school leaders. And then they had the opportunity to work with Dr. Matt Hurt from the Comprehensive Instructional Program with CIP, as you often hear us refer to. He led a session that looked at unpacking some current and historical SLOL data and the powerful impact that grade alignment can have on student success. So after this, Hunt and Eric teams got into breakout sessions, and they two worked together in PLCs to apply the professional learning in the day. The high school kicked off their school breakout sessions by a session facilitated by Dr. Hurt. Again, they looked at current and historical SLOL trend in grade alignment data, and then they joined back together and participated in a professional learning session facilitated by the school administrators and members of the instructional program. For that session, they also went into breakout groups, had time to apply what they had learned, as well as our history team engaged in a work session. So as you can see and have heard on Slide 10, you can see that our day was full of peer collaboration and was aligned to our theme for the year of letting your light shine bright. And I'm so appreciative of all of those to help facilitate and engage in the day to make it so meaningful. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Dr. Browning about the PD Day? It's like a lot of good stuff was going on that day.
Yeah, it was great to pop into the room and see everybody just totally engaged with one another.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We also have you up, Dr. Browning, for the Q1 Data Report.
I am excited for our schools to present their Q1 data. Before they begin, I'm just going to give some brief information about the assessments given. So as you can see on Slide 2, we are going to go over the CIP benchmarks, so that's the Comprehensive Instructional Plan, and the VALS assessment. On Slide 3, you'll see that we have been giving benchmarks that are part of our partnership in the CIP consortium. CIP stands for Comprehensive Instructional Program. It's consortium with school divisions in Virginia. Many of the divisions are very much like Amelia in our size, our rural nature, and I would say our close-knit community feeling. So we're able to connect with those divisions for professional learning, for resource development, and to be able to use some of that data to gauge how are we, where are we, especially when you look at students who are like our own, sometimes from very rural areas. We have been doing this partnership for a bit, and so when we have this data, we often use it to kind of compare our averages against the CIP consortium. Because as we know, that adds efficiency scores change, and we're trying to navigate that. One of the best things we can do is look at where we, where's the rest of the group, and how is it going? And so we've been really pushing our approach in our data meetings, and they have been very powerful. On the next slide, you'll see a little bit of VALS. We started that last year. We came through 3. Previously, it was PALs, so lines, et cetera. But it's a Virginia Language Literacy Spring. This year, it was extended to 4th through 8th grade. Students who did not pass their spring SLOL test in 4th through 8th grade were required to be tested and will have a literacy plan. Students in grades 3 through 3 are all assessed in the fall, mid-year, and then in spring. There is some flexibility, especially with your third graders as far as needing to test them. Anyone in those grades? I'm getting ahead of myself. On the next slide, you can see the components of each assessment. And if anybody with the case of third, that's one we have previously in 4th through 8th, there's very limited need for the alphabet knowledge or phonological awareness, at least for our student population. We didn't need to give that subtest, but it would be there if we had that need. So for the most part, we focused on the code-based encoding and decoding, sounding out and spelling. We also did the oral reading fluency passage and comprehension was optional. On Slide 6, you'll see kind of how their data is laid out. In K through 3, students are assigned a risk level based on their scaled score. They're identified as high-risk, moderate-risk, or low-risk based on their overall scaled score. And in 4th through 8th, it's a little bit different. They assign well below, approaching, or adequate based on each subtest. And then it's then a school to kind of assess and look at that student as a whole and say, okay, where do they fall in? Since this was our first year doing this, we looked at all of the data. We started at middle school first, and then we were able to look at elementary school. And for us, we had identified well below. Being a student who was on 3 out of the 5 tests, they fell in well below or approaching. Now, what we do with each student is tailor to what they need. For us to kind of get a baseline for how many students were well below, that's what we use. For approaching, we found students with 1 to 2 subtests who fell in well below approaching. We identified them as approaching. You'll see that when the school's present. And then adequate, I've noticed subtests that fell into well below and 0 to 1 that would have fallen in approaching. And you'll be able to take a peek and be able to see where we stood. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have in advance. Students? All right, okay, awesome. Well, we're excited with our elementary school team to come on up and share some highlights.
Hi, I'm Ashley Harris, kindergarten teacher.
I'm Elizabeth Powell, 5th grade math and science teacher.
And we're going to talk a little bit about the CIP. She's going to talk a little bit about CIP. I'm going to talk about VALS. And we're just going to go.
Well, start with our CIP benchmark data. Overall, our students are competitive with the CIP overall student average. I do know that our 5th grade math test had some errors in it, so I think that percentage is probably a little bit higher, but we are working on trying to meet that overall average.
The test has some place in there, isn't it?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes. So we took a look at that data and identified areas of strength and opportunities for improvement. You can see in the 2nd grade there that they are working on representing three-digit numbers in standard word form. In 3rd grade, they're going to focus on estimating, representing, and solving solutions to single-step and multi-step problems, so those sort of word problems and things that are difficult for students to process. In 4th grade, they are working on patterns and also estimating, representing, solving, and justifying solutions to single-step and multi-step problems. Start to see a theme here. And then in 5th grade, we're focusing there with equivalency between fractions, everyone's favorite, and the prime and composite numbers is where there was a bit of an error with the test, so we're not sure if that's completely accurate. So we'll work on it. To help with these areas of improvement, we've been using a lot of iXL this year. That's been used a lot to encourage students to be able to work independently. We're doing a lot of spiral review in form of warm-ups and in small groups. And then we're doing skill-based small group instruction with our tutors.
Okay, now we're going to move on to our reading CIP benchmark. So you can see that overall, surprisingly, 2nd and 5th grade that take CIP are higher and above average as the CIP overall versus 3rd and 4th grade, who are a little bit below the student average. As you go through the strengths and weaknesses, you can notice, I mean, I kind of find it interesting that one of the strengths in reading for 2nd grade especially is character traits and predictions. And that is one of the things that a lower elementary school teacher is focusing on, like, you know, during a whole story, is focusing on those characters, those settings, those plots, those things. So it's showing that when they get to 2nd grade, that that is a strength, and they are remembering those things as they went through kindergarten through first. Fact and opinion is obviously an area of improvement for 2nd graders. They just want to always have their own opinion. As we move on to 3rd grade, one of their strengths was finding the main idea. Whereas, another interesting thing that I noticed is that vocabulary is a weakness, as well as some social skills. And again, I feel like that's where our tiger time could come into play a little bit. They are learning more about friendships and how to form these relationships. And I think those things will carry over into their reading to improve that. But as you get to 4th and 5th grade, ironically, vocabulary is a strength. So just kind of, maybe those 4th and 5th grade teachers need to tell 3rd grade some strategies on vocabulary. But also, an area of improvement for 4th grade would be conflict and resolution, as well as author's purpose for 5th grade, trying to understand a little bit about what happened in the story, why did it happen, why is the author writing this? Sort of things to improve on. As we move on, my favorite VALS. I am a big believer and think that VALS is way above PALs from what it used to be. Again, this is my 19th year teaching, so from going from PALs to VALS, it really does increase the rigor. As a kindergarten teacher, I know now, for my second year into VALS, that it is more phonetic-based. And as our students get more and more into it, they will start to get better with their phonics and sounding-out skills rather than just remembering it automatically. I can never say that word, automaticity. Yes.
Would you say that's one of the greater differences in the two?
Yes, I would say that is the greatest difference. PALs before was just, do they know their letters? Do they know their sounds? Can they spell a word? Do they not? And now we are seeing, can they break a word apart, which will help them with their writing eventually? Can they understand?
Wordless, individual sound.
There was never a comprehension piece with part of VALS, of PALs, as there is with VALS. So again, it's increasing that rigor for our students to help them as they get through 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade to take the CIP and other tests. So overall, our scores for kindergarten in 1st grade are a little lower than we, I mean, we're looking at high-risk. So remember, these are students that qualify in a high-risk intervention, so these students are receiving intervention. However, it drops dramatically by the time they get to 2nd grade. So as they go on through these interventions, they are starting to apply those skills more in 2nd grade. So again, as they get through those phonics pieces. As you continue, 4th and 5th grade, like Dr. Browning said, this was the first year that they had to take VALS. And again, they are learning, again, how to sound out words, kind of like taking a step back for them, whereas they might not have all learned the phonetic rules back then. They just learned, this is the word, this is how we say it. And they never learned the rule or the reasoning as to why. So again, it's a learning curve for that. Some of the strategies that we are doing is more, like we said, more phonics-based. The segmenting, we're really working on breaking that word apart, which will eventually help them with their spelling. Decoding, we have a lot of students this year that either never went to pre-K or stayed at home for a while. So even though our kindergarten scores are a little higher, I think that they will, you'll see improvement as they get through school and learn how to adjust socially. As you can see, like, our numbers are dropping, though, for students at high-risk between kindergarten 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade there, depending on the categories that you look at. And again, this is just putting more phonics-based instruction into each grade level, which hopefully we'll see as a trend moving forward. And so if we go on to the support strategies, we noticed that one of the things that we are working more on is putting more fluency in, continue to build that vocabulary and that word knowledge. And we're doing more phonics just in whole group as well in small group. So instead of, it used to just be, they would only get that phonics piece of small group, now they're getting in a whole group too, which again enhances the vocabulary and that sort of thing. We're increasing the rigor in our small group intervention by focusing on these skills. And if we go to the next slide, we are increasing our higher-level comprehension questions to make sure that we are asking those deeper questions to help the students think about it. Even in kindergarten, I'm asking those higher-level questions and using those words, predictions, infer, so that way when they get to these figure tests, they will understand, oh, yeah, I remember that. And talking about that in our data meetings and PLC meetings helps spread it across all the other teachers as well. So it's not just me shining my light, but I'm spreading my light to everyone else. And there's your slides.
All right, and then finally, our scientific CIP info data. There's just the 5th grade, and we are on par with what the CIP overall student average, which is great improvement from last year. So we are excited about that. Our biggest opportunity for improvement is scientific method, having students be able to identify those steps, be able to identify independent, dependent variable and things like that. So we're going to continue. It's early in the year, so when we're talking about science, we talk about those types of method all year long. So we expect that to certainly improve as we continue to do more investigations. So for strategies, of course, we are doing a lot of investigations, try to do at least one a week, if not more, and identify those terminologies as we are going. We are trying to encourage the students to use more models, to identify more models, and to be able to make connections to the real world. We are trying to encourage the students to use more models, to identify more models, and to be able to make connections to the real world.
Thanks.
My question, just a comment, the science data is encouraging.
Yes.
Because we seem to struggle in middle school and high school with science as well, so I hope this carries over.
Yes, I do too, sure.
I heard you say you really like vowels.
I do.
As improvement over pals. And so how are we feeling about CIP? Cause here, it like just about the CIP benchmarks in general.
Yeah, I mean, about the-
I think it's good for us to be able to compare ourselves to counties that are similar to us. I think it's very eye-opening. I know at our work session last week, it was encouraging to hear people talking about, a lot of times you try to compare us to like the overall SL data, and that's the stuff, and you're comparing yourself to Northern Virginia and places that don't really relate. But to be able to see it next to students who are similar to us, who are coming from similar backgrounds, I think it's really good to just have a more level, be able to see where you're stacked.
The question I was gonna ask is sort of related, but do you all get any, do you get any reports about those sort of sister schools? And how, like, the breakdown that we get for our students, do you get that similar breakdown across CIP? Do you get that similar breakdown across CIP? So that when you're looking, not just 75% to 75%, do you get that breakdown to see, like, for instance, I think it's fascinating that third grade and fifth grade were low across the board. Why is that? Not just here, like, you know, and it's not just, you can put it on something like they were kindergartners when COVID hit, or, you know, something significant like that. I'm interested to know the nuts and bolts of it as it pertains to other schools and divisions and what they might be doing. Cause I love how you all break down all of your data and your strategies. Do you all get any reports or feedback that's that detailed?
We are in the process of having our individual and team data meetings. I think they started today. I think they are part-time these days. So I think that information is being told, I think last year we did individual data meetings, we're more focused, like, individually what you can do, and maybe your comparison in your team, but I don't recall if we-
I know we brought it up at our PLC last time, that sometimes looking at the CIP, like, what is Nada Way doing with their third and fifth grade, for example? That is working. And so Ms. Davis has, did go to a conference or whatever, she went to something. And she came back, was gonna start sharing this once she got her ideas all together. But she did read off a whole slew of things that they are working on and talking about. So I feel like, in general, it is being discussed, like you said, by county, by county. But we did ask some of those questions, like, well, what are they doing that we could do, or-
That's led us here.
That's led us, right.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
And I think I was gonna mention that, like, I feel like our take-home book program has been a really beneficial thing as well, because we have been able to put a book in every student's hand, regardless if they have one or not. And I feel like that's increasing, I mean, that's putting responsibility a little bit on the parents, but it's also allowing them to read a book with their student that's on their level, that they can start understanding. This year, our, Ms. Lyons also sent home, like, questions for parents to ask. Cause not all parents know, like, the story, what you do, questions, what you do, and those types of things. And I think it's also enlightening the parents to know, like, I'm so glad you're kindergartners on a third grade level, but they cannot tell me who the character was in the story.
Right.
You know, so it's like telling them, yes, they can read it, but are they understanding and comprehending? So I feel like that has been a great success.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you so very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you. All right, who's up next for the middle school? I like, who's doing it? Who's moving first?
I think my information comes up first on our board. You know, if this roll down to the, to the bottom.
Uh-oh. Don't panic. Must be all that snow coming down out there, boss.
This is our, we can see it on our screen here, we have it. Do you want to borrow one of our computers?
I'll put my phone to the left. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you all very much. All right, so, hello, I'm Mr. Ward, I'm seventh grade math teacher for Millie Middle School. I'm here to talk to you about our middle school math data. I know you guys can't see it on your computer from home.
There it is.
Yay. All right, so one more slide.
If you hadn't given him your computer, it wouldn't have come up.
It was there. There you go, thank you.
Awesome.
All right, so here's our math data. As you can see, from sixth grade, moving forward through Algebra I, we have a nice increase from year to year. That's the one big takeaway that I've noticed in this is that, you know, as they're coming into our building, as they're cycling through our building, they're getting stronger and stronger. We're still not quite there in terms of our sixth and seventh grade meeting, where we are with our CIP. But as you can see, as they cycle into that eighth grade, they are getting above that, that level. So, you know, we're seeing a lot of good, good instruction and all that stuff happening at the age levels to build them up and get them stronger for what we need them to do. And as you see, once they get into that algebra, you know, we're, we're pretty solid. Again, those algebra kids are also the advanced kids, so, you know, we're gonna see that with higher schools.
And those sixth graders are the kindergartners.
Mm-hmm.
Sure are.
They sure are.
Could that be one of the reasons why we're at 31%?
Probably. You know, one thing I've noticed over the last couple of years is just, you know, as the cycle comes through, I think this year, the seventh graders were in second grade, so I think the sixth graders were actually in first grade.
It's amazing.
Cause we tried to teach our students.
So I know, like, in my experience, the last couple of years, like, division and multiplication was very, very rocky. This year, I'm actually seeing a little more strength in that class, throughout the class. So we are starting to see that bubble kind of starting to creep away. Hopefully, it'll keep going. If you wanna go on to the next slide. So, one thing that I thought was very interesting, if we look at each grade level, our strengths and weaknesses are about the same where we're at. Our strengths in number sense, ratios, and all that kind of stuff. But where we're, where we're seeing some of those opportunities for improvement is when we start adding letters to math.
I get it.
Yep. So when we get into those, solving algebraic equations and inequalities, once up to stuff, that kind of, we see that. And that comes in our first quarter, we have all the number sense, and then we start talking about expressions and figuring out how stuff relates based on the CIP model. As you can see from some of the eighth, you know, we have very similar strengths, very similar weaknesses throughout the grade levels. Even into the algebra. So our structural support strategies, again, strengthening the fluency of our foundational skills. That's been a big thing, especially with our kids, like, trying to build those gaps that they have, that they missed through that time. Especially with their multiplication, division, conceptual understandings, their interactive and timed practice activities. So giving them plenty of opportunity and multimodal ways to, to access the math, so that they're actually, you know, one kid learns one way, another kid learns another way. So giving multiple opportunities to show their learning is, but one of the strategies we're doing, the deliberate teaching of contextual multi-step word problem solving. One of the worst things about math is it's about a 30% reading test. And so the reading skills have to be there and they're, you know, to be able to put together the math. So really focusing, kind of bridging that cross-curricular between English and math, trying to build those reading comprehension skills to help them with their word problem strategies. And then building remediation into this flexible, our enrichment times, taught us stuff to build small group remediation to help bridge those gaps. Any questions for math?
No questions.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Emerson. I am the seventh grade English teacher. And I just wanted to talk to you all about the CIP benchmark scores. For English, our benchmark score for first quarter has been pretty, pretty good. I like where we are, especially from a seventh grade. We worked really hard throughout the first quarter to get the skills necessary to complete the test, but also to help our individual reading as well. So for sixth grade, for our area of strength, we are working well with textual evidence, especially with summarizing and filling key events and details. But we are also struggling a little bit with summarizing text, determining themes as well. Definitely in our literary fiction tanks. For our grade seven, we have been, I have been working very hard making sure students have been able to find evidence within the text with us through rereading, and highlighting, underlining, boxing, making sure we find the key information. So we go back and we ask those higher-level thinking questions, we're able to pull and synthesize our information together. One area that we did struggle in is on our literary fiction, specifically with characters. Students are able to tell you who our protagonist or antagonist, our dynamic and our setting characters are, but how do they influence the plot? How do they relate to the setting? Things like that. So looking to really make sure that we are trying our best to make sure, like, everyone is on the same page, things like that. For our eighth grade, we've been really good with the vocabulary. We worked hard with vocab last year, and it seems like it's paying off again this year. So another area of struggle is connotation-denotation, really figuring out, why is an author using this specific word versus this one? What do they mean? Like, why are they using this vocabulary? So we kind of gone in and see what we can do to support, increasing time, or increasing the time that students are reading grade-level specific texts. And also while we're going in there, we're making sure we're comprehending things properly, really increasing the rigor for our comprehension, making sure we're using the correct depth of knowledge and things like that. Additionally, we're working on explicit vocabulary. A lot of the vocabulary we've done in the past has been focused more on root words and affixes or suffixes and prefixes. But with the new standards coming up, and we want to upgrade our reader, we're really looking at, looking at vocabulary within the text of the story, how that relates. And then again, we're also just looking for additional small group time. We have our enrichment period. At the end of the day, real, able to split off and kind of work with specific needs for students, things like that. I've got a couple more things I'd like to speak about my stuff while I'm here. I really just want to shout out the professional development that we had. I feel like really, the feedback I've gotten from other English teachers is that we had a professional development at the beginning of October. It was really informative, and it really helped us highlight high-quality instructional materials that were on a grade level, and as well as aligning 2024 standards. We also had the professional development we had last week, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, I suppose now. And I really love Mr. Cooper's presentation. I've gotten some great feedback from our English department about upgrading our six, defining what success means for English and our success criteria. Also, just like to shout out some additional support that we've gotten. We've gotten a new textbook, a new textbook recently for HMH that was approved. And it's really helping us with our scaffolding, our differentiation, and just general support that we need. So it helps us with our special education, it has ELO support in there as well. So it's really been really great. And that's been a lot facilitated by Mr. Shi, so I'd like to give Mr. Shi a shout out. He's our reading specialist, he really helps with all the English department really just upping our game, I suppose, in a way. And then Ms. Watley, our librarian as well, has been really influential with our students. We're creating hands-on and movement activities as well as supplemental. Vows is new to us. I don't have a lot to say so far. We are going to be doing a PLC next week to kind of go over the scores and then what that means for us moving forward. So as you can see, for our sixth grade, 21% of our students have identified as well below, or seventh graders 13, and for our eighth, 12%. I wish I had more information for you at this time, but Mr. Shi and Ms. Browning has been really influential in kind of getting vowels up to our students and testing them. So I'd love, I'd love to see what we can do with this information in the future. Other than that, here's some things that we have, we have noticed through our insights. Go to the next slide. There's some supporting fluency, including modeling and full reading. Modeling has been a big success, I feel, in the seventh grades particularly. The I do, we do, you do strategy has been working some wonders for our students. We also want to build some more morphology, and we can do that more vocabulary practice. And then syllable practice, again, is a lot, a lot of the vocabulary piece. Other than that, thanks, that's it for me. Do you have any questions that I could maybe, maybe try to answer?
No.
Thanks.
I appreciate bringing up that you are enjoying or see value in the new textbook. I was, I was sitting here thinking that, like, does anybody have anything they need to better support them?
I want to mention for math as well, the math-based textbook has really been invaluable.
Fantastic. And I love seeing that we are over, our overall average is over the CIP overall average, which is-
Yes.
Awesome for English.
It's about winning.
So thank you, it's about winning.
Yes, as a new teacher, I think I came in with, I needed a lot of extra support as well as far as materials and resources. And when we got to that beat last year, like, night and day difference, they have so much material on every different strand. And it's all on our depth of knowledge and things like that. And then with the new textbook as well, additional stories, handouts, materials, resources, things like scaffolding, lesson planning, ELO support, like, all that stuff, it's great.
Can I ask, from a teacher's perspective, how, is it easy for you to communicate with other teachers and other schools for part of the CIP? The question came up a little bit earlier, but-
For me-
Can you guys collaborate a little bit on?
For me, no. I don't speak with any other, any other divisions as far as CIP is concerned. I do believe Mr. Shi does a lot of branching out to other support, so I can perhaps ask him and see where-
It makes sense to have one person be that.
Like, as far as the scores, like, I just get my own scores. I don't get any, any other counties or any other districts. I don't even get any other from our schools, so I can only speak on that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right. And moving on down to the high school, please.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Kristen Crowder, the assistant principal at the high school, and I'm gonna talk to you about the math scores. But on the theme of winning, the volleyball team is- They, I know they won the first two games, the third one just come through, yes.
I got the one that's the thing one.
Awesome.
Yes. And to speak about, like, speaking to other school districts, this is just from, like, we can be on some meetings with other districts, like, I'm getting ready to be on one with other principals from other districts and assistant principals. But there is also, they used to, and I'm not sure if they still do, have like math meetings. Matt Hurt would run them, and math teachers could go to it. I went to the science one back in the day. So I'm not positive if he's still doing those, but I can certainly ask when I go, when I, when I go on the virtual meeting that's upcoming. So we can go ahead to the, the meat of this, yeah, there you go. As you can see, we are competitive in all of the math areas. Algebra II, we are winning. Yay. And I do want to point out in Algebra I and geometry, our highest caliber students take those tests when they're at the middle school, so he kind of steals the heart, huh?
I mean, yeah, it doesn't-
So that's why those numbers might be slightly lower than, than we would love them to be. And we're obviously striving to bring them up, but, you know, just saying. And we're obviously striving to bring them up, but you know, just saying. So moving to this slide on algebra. We, we identified two areas of strength and two weaknesses because they were so close together. That's why we did two. And for the areas of strength, the students are successful in solving multi-step linear equations and linear inequalities. But they need practice to manipulate the equations and apply those math skills to the real world, which obviously is super important. In geometry, students successfully solve problems using angles and that were formed by parallel lines. But they need more practice converting the logic statements. I don't know if y'all remember those if P then Q into their proper symbolic forms. And then in algebra two, students are good at recognizing and distinguishing between like the basic graphs. If we show them a graph, they can say, oh, that's an exponential function or that's a square root. But they need more practicing, practice determining when the graph of the function is increasing or decreasing or remaining constant. And so for our strategies, one of the strategies is really explicit instruction and reflection. So things like asking them to say it like you would to a five-year-old and, you know, the shoulder partners and that type of things, helping them to break it down into the basics and making sure that they fully understand it, working with their peers. So they're, they're getting involved and they're not just passively learning. The spiral review in math, that's so important. We just bring the concepts back around and back around. And that's where your data informed decisions are so important, where you look and find the areas, the areas of weakness are going to get more emphasis than your areas of strength there. And then the use of standard notation. Standard notation is the universal language of math. And so it's important for them to be able to use that to converse about it. I think that's some of my areas.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Browning?
I said two overall, so this is not just. I was going to ask if anybody needed any, felt like they needed anything, they don't have or anything that could improve the whole situation. And then number two, how do you think? I always worry about, I know my kids will come home and say, I took a test in something and they don't understand why they just took that test. Test fatigue, I guess. Test fatigue. And we base so much on this data that comes from this test. How do you feel like the students receive? Do they know the value of what they're taking? The importance of what they're taking or how that communicated to them?
That's, that's a really good point because I think that some of them don't recognize that that's what's driving a lot of the instructions.
Steps.
Yeah. Where do we go from here? And so that is an important conversation to be had. And a lot of that, I think, is determined by the attitude of the teacher in giving the test, you know, and making sure that all our teachers are on board for PLCs and things like that.
Does our benchmark's rated? Remind me. Elementary's not. But middle and high, yes.
Please.
Just for me, I think the students do kind of understand the significance of the test. I know that we do a lot of, like I said, we have an enrichment period at the end of the day. We break off into smaller groups and we really focus off the skills. We are proficient in these things and we don't have to spend extra time during our enrichment to sit down in a small group to do these things. I think that can be a motivator.
See, they got the if then.
I think that's an important reminder to, to make sure that we are not just, it's not just about us. Obviously, it's more about them and they need to be on board. Their relationships with their teachers are just so important.
Well, and I always feel bad for Ms. Davis and her team because she usually gets like all the questions. And I have very mindfully considered spreading the love. But it's not really, it's not really a question. It's actually a commendation, I think, across the board. And also, you guys know, for four years, I have said that assessment is the hill I'm going to die on. And for four years, I have pitched an all-out temper tantrum about how many assessments we give our kids. And by golly, this is such a pared-down version of all of the data that we've received for the past many years. And I think in hearing from you all, from your, your teachers, from you all as administrators too, it seems like it's more meaningful. It seems like it's a better driver of instruction and instructional choices, which just makes me happy for the teachers and for the childrens. Instead of here's another test to test the test you're reviewing for a test or another test. And I am so appreciative. So it's not really a question, more of a comment and across the board. It just, it gives me some hope, which is great. So thank you all. Any other questions for Ms. Crowder or anyone else? Thank you all so much. Okay. Now we are going to move into our information agenda, starting first with Mr. Trump and our finance reports.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So that I'm sharing with you our finance report for FY26. The media goals expenditures should be at about 26.5% and we are close to that number at 28.48%. As initial beginning, your expenses continue to linger slightly, but you'll note there's a significant reduction from last month where we were a little bit ahead by 2.76%. And this month, that gap is 1.9. We're just starting to normalize slowly towards the middle of the year. In the textbook fund expenditures are 29.68% for FY26. Funds four and five for all in construction had expenditures of appropriated funds at 24.05% and 0% respectively. In the cafeteria fund expenditures are at 14.23% for FY26. And this is partially accelerated in part by the purchase of a new convection oven for the Amelia County Elementary School, which replaced the unit there that could no longer be repaired. We have an excellent maintenance staff here that does a lot as little as possible to maintain funds and keep equipment going. But even they have their limits. And when things are no longer manufactured, you kind of have to move on. So that's what I have for our finance reports. Any questions about those?
Any questions for Mr. Trump for this report? Okay.
Ken.
All right, we're gonna, that's in the bills. That's for the dumb. This is just information. Mr. Trump, we also have you for the USAC appropriation update.
Yes, and this is not on the approval agenda this evening, but just an update on one of the appropriations we had from last month. I want to give an update on, on this request that went before the board supervisors last month. When presented to that board, questions were raised about the total of the grant funds that would be reimbursed to ACPS, not just the total allocation that was of effect, was initially available, which it will be based on request. They just feared appropriating additional funds for expenditures that might have to be supported by reimbursements. Kind of how we tend to operate, we have a lot of estimated state funds that we have to account for regularly throughout the year and the budget process. But in this one-off process, the middle of the year, they just had some questions and weren't as comfortable committing to the full amount there. That final re, that appropriation vote at the last meeting failed by a vote of three to two. But in their discussion, they were noting that, you know, they didn't have an issue with the expense. It was just what that total final figure would be. At the time of that vote, it was still unknown to us if we'd be able to access remaining funds in the grant. Some grants have provisions for additional rounds of funding or grant amendments that allow you to, you know, find the wiggle room and make proposition or proposals to expend remaining unallocated funds. But this is a new grant that we haven't worked with before. Since that vote, I've followed up with our primary contact for this grant, kind of learned more about the ins and outs of those processes. And he said that at times there are, there is some wiggle room, but because of how our grant application was, was developed, there isn't enough funding remaining to fund any of our other approved items. Basically, the way this works is we describe all the things we might want to purchase and then vendors bid on those things. And then they piece together as many of those individual purchases as makes sense together and as fit within your total. And none of the remaining items that we have, that we received quotes on, fit within that remaining allocation. So based on my discussion with him, our expend, the expenses that we have incurred are going to be our final expenses. So with our final expenses totaling $57,751.42, this grant reimburses 90% of those. So it's a pretty good deal for us. And that means that we are anticipating a reimbursement of $51,976.28, the timing of which would be dependent on pending federal action, which is kind of the way things go, that to release these funds to allow us to be reimbursed. We anticipate that coming in the next few weeks. They haven't gotten any signals about these funds being withheld, canceled, things like that. But it's just one thing where we don't have a final set date on that piece.
In the future. And I'm hoping I don't know the answer to this question. Isn't it likely that we're going to have similar grants, similar scenarios where you may not know a final number?
Generally, we, I think this, this grant is a unique one that we have not had to encounter much. And part of it even comes with how vendors select to be reimbursed through this process. Where usually we, we've had grants similar to this one, but as I said before, we didn't have to appropriations for them because we were simply billed for our 10% share. And that was the only expenditure we recorded. So we aren't taking any money privately. It's possible this will happen. I think it's a, it's a learning experience to see how different grants functions.
For seeing that someone's current discomfort with, with a procedure in going.
And that's, and we're going to continue to operate the way we operate and put forward the best requests, the most detailed requests we have. As you know, as you'll note, I did not come back with a revised appropriation request for you all tonight. The board passed, the board passed. We stand by that as a reasonable decision at that point. I'm just providing this update because I plan to give the same update to the board supervisors on Wednesday. As in their discussion, they signaled they were kind of debating, are they going to go with vote on the full appropriation or vote on the lower one and increase down the road? Which was their option that they chose not to take that evening. But it's quite possible they will simply choose to appropriate a lower total.
Okay. Remind me, our original request total was?
Seventy.
Uh, seventy thousand and a little more. I can't remember the exact, I don't have that code. On that, I don't know if it's on that.
It's a potential loss of 20.
Well, and I think the.
Lost, missed opportunity.
Yeah. I think that's also for us to learn about how to, it's similar to the, I think we were discussing, it's similar to the security grant, where our security grant application, we know we could be awarded $250,000 with a local match of $62,500. $315,000 or so, $312,000.500. We know that's what we could spend. Our application every year greatly exceeds that because we know that state could come, they could fund all of it or they could come back and say, well, we're only going to fund these two schools. And we want, our hope is that with what they approve, we maximize the dollar value. This one's tougher because that one, we actually put dollar values into the application of what we anticipated costing. We don't know what this is going to cost until we actually file the application. So there's no playing around with it. It's a bit more of a, just a more opaque process, which makes it tricky. It's a learning experience, but it's not going to be, this definitely isn't a major source that we have to deal with. So we'll learn, we'll do a little bit of that, I'll communicate differently. It'll be easier.
Yeah, I believe that figure was 70,176. Okay.
So that is the update I have. But as I was going to give the board supervisors an update, I want to give you the same update as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Lynch for the next couple. First with the facilities update, please.
Since our last meeting, we painted the boys' locker room at the high school. Excuse me. Was also, we have also wanted to raise the sprinkler system on the soccer field. We're in the process of trimming some limbs across the division to kind of enhance security in the appearance of the school. We had a total of eight one maintenance tickets, 125 tech tickets, and 14 transportation tickets closed since our last meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch for facilities? All right, thank you, sir. We also have some field trip applications.
Yes, that's attached. You'll see this month's filter request for your review. There's zero applications under, under action items for your approval.
Awesome. And facility use applications too.
Yes, we had one facility use application for the ACHS auditorium for a few.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? Wonderful, thank you, sir. All right, Dr. Browning, we have you back up for University of Richmond Education Services Agreement.
So sharing this for informational purposes this evening, it is an education service agreement that would allow us to continue the participation that we've had in the Next Generation Leadership Academy, NGLA. And that's been something that we've been a part of for some years now. As ongoing professional development cohort for new assistant principals and aspiring school leaders. So right now, I've shared it for informational purposes. Previously, they used an MOU and that looked quite different. So we want you to have time with that and then we will come back to see the progress.
Any questions for Dr. Browning? It's a great opportunity for our leaders. That's great. Awesome, thank you. We have some fundraising applications, Dr. Medley?
Yes, there have been six requests. One from the middle school for staff breakfast sales. One combined for the middle school and high school candle sales. For the music department, the elementary school yearbook sale fundraiser. And the high school DECA fundraiser, fundraiser for online snacks, Cool Bean Cafe, and Raider.
Love it. All right, any questions about fundraising applications? All right, let's move on into our consent agenda. Might I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda? Thank you, Dr. Erie, is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, we also need a motion to approve the minutes from the actual teen school board meeting. Thank you, Ms. Fletcher, is there a second? Dr. Garrity, you're going to get there. Got to be quick, got to be quick.
It's a freight.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? Might there be a motion to approve the bills and information?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Garrity, is there a second?
There is.
Thank you, Dr. Erie, any discussion?
You'll be happy to ask, ask my questions and.
Outstanding, Ms. Fletcher.
Only one question this time.
Very proud. And she already had the answer. All right, awesome. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent. Let's move into our action items, please. First, we have action on a request for release from no trespass notice, Dr. Medley?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do not see the individual made the request in the audience today.
Okay. All right, then we will move right along to approval of religious exemption.
Yes, we have a request from four families totaling eight students who are asking for religious exemption status.
Okay, wonderful. Might there be a motion to approve religious exemption? Thank you, Ms. Fletcher, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, we also need approval of a policy LBD revision.
Yes, VSBA has updated policy LBD as of November 2025. The current policy is in compliance. However, there was some confusion related to the express consent in the current policy versus written consent. So to help clarify the policy, it's been updated. Now to have that clarity, to include the language on the last page that speaks specifically to the words only with written consent of the parent and only to the extent authorized by that consent. So that is the updated VSBA policy as of November.
Excellent. Right, might there be a motion to approve policy LBD revision?
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Erie, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Whittington, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, wonderful. Mr. Trump, we have approval of the DCJS grant appropriation.
For your approval this evening is a request to appropriate $31,210 to security expenditures within operations and maintenance into local revenue. In a letter dated October 23rd, 2025, Amelia County was notified of a DCJS grant award in support of new school safety personnel. This award is the result of a combined effort of school and county staff and we are excited to bring aboard this new position. As the new position. As the new position will be managed and paid by ACPS, we are requesting that projected FY26 revenue from this grant be appropriated to ACPS this time. The requested funds equal 50% of the total available state special funds that have been awarded to ACPS as grant funds are awarded on a calendar year basis for this grant, beginning in January 2026. Remaining grant funds accessible in FY27 will be addressed at a later date, either through the budget cycle or carried forward appropriate, or a separate appropriation somewhere. This appropriation is being requested now so that ACPS can initiate processes for hiring this new position with the hope of having a candidate in place as early as possible in January. A local management alignment with our local composite index is required, but it will be met with previously appropriated funds for personnel. No additional funds are being requested from the county to meet their required.
All right, is there a motion to approve the DCJS grant appropriation? Thank you, Dr. Garrity. A second? Thank you, Dr. Erie. Any discussion?
What is the new position?
This is.
Have a title? News, safety personnel?
Yes, this one is going to be at like a threat assessment management position, though it kind of consolidates some of the things that are distributed, some of the heavier lifting for investigations and threat assessments that's spread across multiple departments and are more technical and challenging to, to account for and have timelines for, and consolidate under one division, division coordinator.
Where would this person be housed?
In terms of where they would have an office? I don't think we have gotten quite that.
Going to float around like.
Physical location.
We're currently in the process of creating a job description.
Thank you, Mr.
It would be a division-wide safety coordinator.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Trump. All right, Mr. Lynch, approval of surplus items.
Seeking your approval tonight for the attached items to declare surplus. These items include file cabinets, kitchen and HVAC equipment that have been replaced, portable science sink, a balancing, water fountain, library books, and two rooms that have been taken out of service.
My favorite in reading these are the descriptors, like "ac" is in snack, "am" is in ham. That just made me giggle. Sorry. Library reading catalog.
So, hold on, I was getting ready to have a discussion with that. Move to approve the surplus items list.
Okay, we have a second? Thank you, Dr. Erie. Discussion?
Have we ever had to write out each book before? I don't know that I remember seeing that.
No, but luckily, we were, we were able to pull a report. The data said it would work with their library.
Gotcha, because it's all electronic.
I was going to say, was there a report?
It was a little bit easier than, than hand looking at every, every book.
Ham and ham.
I know in the past, there's probably been textbooks that, that we've discussed and we, surplus. We have a policy for that, but unfortunately, it doesn't state library books. So just to make sure that, you know, we're doing things.
Change in that, maybe?
Possibly, but, you know, I believe this is, this makes, make us okay to move forward. On donating these.
Absolutely.
No, because I started reading that and I was like, hey, I'm in, hey, I'm going to lose this. And then I realized it was a list of each elementary library book.
Well, it's 1158 pages.
Yes, no big deal. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Well, I was, I'd asked earlier if, if we could, you know, donate them to the library here or if there is still a friend to the library.
There is.
Or if there's 1,500 books, could, you know, students like go to the library and pick some or are they already gone?
Many of the books, these are, they're here.
They need to.
Why they're being discarded because they're not, or I don't know that anybody would really want them.
Okay.
Well, it was published in 2017. It's that old.
Island of missed books. It might be well-loved by.
Well, I like that term. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. And now we have approval of ACE's donation from Launch Family Entertainment Park, Ms. Davis.
Okay, sorry, I'm.
Are we all dealing with this?
Yes, I apologize for that, but good evening. I am coming to you again, seeking your approval for a second donation from Launch. The previous donation was for getting us through December with our reading program. And they would like to continue that with us all the way through May, so that is.
Like, to continue the. That's amazing. All right, wonderful. Might there be a motion to approve this donation? Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? Awesome. Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, and we also have another donation for FFA. Dr. Randy, please.
Yes, good evening. We actually have two donations that went to FFA for the national convention. Two generous donations, one from the Veterans of Foreign Wars and one from Journey Community Center. We had a third donation this month from Amelia's Kitchen, who donated a portion of their proceeds over two days to Amelia County High School. We're seeking your approval to receive these donations.
That's awesome. All right, thank you. Ms. Fletcher, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you. And thank you so much, yeah, to, to everyone for these donations. They're incredible. All right, moving into the superintendent's report. Dr. Medley, do you have anything to report for Dr. Harper?
Yes, our October ADM was 1490.819. At the end of October, K-12 enrollment was 1495. Pre-K to 12 enrollment was 1561. Also, the October discipline reports are provided for your information. Board members are also asked to make sure that if you plan to attend the convention on November 19th through the 21st, that we please let Ms. Peavy know which days you will be attending and which evenings you will need a break. And lastly, the Amelia County Christmas Parade is Saturday at December 6th at 4:00 p.m. The theme is "Christmas in America." The deadline for registration is March 1st at noon. And if the board members want to have an entry in the parade, if you would please just let Ms. Peavy know, and we will take care of that. And if so, look forward to seeing you on Saturday the 6th.
Excellent. All right, thank you so much. Now we have our school board member reports.
Honestly, I have nothing for you to talk.
That's okay. Aren't you going to the conference next week?
Other than, yeah, but.
He's got to save that for December.
I'm sorry.
What are you going to do?
I was trying to give him. He's like, yes, but.
I think most of my things have been touched on. It was very exciting to be at the middle school ACE competitions and then the district championship. The happy faces of those children as they won for overall points and overall matches won during the season. It was pretty awesome. Volleyball games, as we've already touched on, should involve a lot of volleyball games here lately. And yes, Barstee just won the.
That's awesome.
Yeah, the next round of playoffs. So they play again, today's Monday. So they play again Wednesday.
And they are automatically end states.
Automatically state. And will Wednesday be here? Does it?
Nice.
So everybody come out Wednesday at.
Six.
Six.
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Talking about the. Have you talked about the officially? Maybe.
I was going to talk about career day.
Have been.
Looking forward to career day. It's Friday for the middle school and high school. And we had a governor's school Southside Virginia meeting in October, mostly focused on recruitment, which is already getting started just this week, last week. The gov school came out, instructors came out to the different feeder schools to do sessions with interested students and parents and to get them kind of aware of what the testing and application process will be. Shadowing dates are coming out for each, for the kids to go and actually spend the day at the gov school to see what it's all about. And we approved the senior field trip that happens every spring where they go to DC over by and get to see some of the artwork and museum displays that go along with a lot of the texts and names that they've been studying.
Appomattox Regional Governor's School has canceled their readings for this and next month.
Tomorrow, I'll be visiting ANT C to see the skill, or test, check out? Check out the skills of the cosmetology students because I'm going to want to cut my hair tomorrow. Tomorrow is free haircut day. It's awesome. I assume it's free. If not. Going to break some. Say it again? Good to know. Good to know. I've been waiting for like a month for get a, letting my hair get long enough for the implant. I'm just, I'm excited to see that, have a haircut by one of the cosmetology students tomorrow, so we'll see how it goes.
Excellent. And for me, I just want to share that, as you all know, my time on the board is winding down. I wrap up at the end of December. But I would like to congratulate Mr. Mike Weaver, who is in attendance this evening. He was just recently elected to District 5 to serve school board, so he will be up here with these fabulous colleagues come January. And I just want to say congratulations to you. And also to Robin, who swept her race in her district. And so it's, but landslide. But I just wanted to say congratulations and I look forward to seeing great things from you.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you. All right, otherwise, do we have any new business?
But just a reminder, December meeting is.
Yes, December meeting is December 15th.
It's throwing us because it's the third Monday. It's the second Monday.
Yes.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's Veteran's Day.
Oh, yes.
Program. Tomorrow's Veteran's Day Ceremony is coming up.
Depending on the weather.
Yeah, well.
Unless we get a blizzard, please.
There's no blizzard. There's no blizzard all that right now. Just my kiddo praying for it. It's, it's, I don't think it's happening. Yes, and then, so that's tomorrow, volleyball Wednesday. And then before we know it, we'll be heading for a fall break and then coming back and jumping right in for some more instruction before December is here. I just think that's crazy how quickly this year has been flying by. All right, so any new business? Any announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Any discussions? All those in favor? Wave good night. Thanks for coming, y'all. Have a good night.